Good evening, everyone. I call this committee of the whole meeting to order here in council chambers at 6:00 P.M. I do not believe we have remote electronic attendance, ma'am and quid.
No, we don't.
We do have an oath of office for our new, the appointment of Barry Dykheisen. Is that how we say it?
Correct.
Thank you. To the position of Assistant City Administrator effective August 1st, 2022. So I will come down to you.
Okay, I was called. This has changed a great deal, hasn't it?
There should be one there, too. And just raise your right hand and repeat that command. Hi, Barry Dykheisen. Having duly appointed to the Office of Assistant City Administrator of the city of Moline, Illinois, who solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully administer within the Moline Municipal Code of Ordinances and otherwise discharge the duties of the Office of Assistant City Administrator of the city of Moline, Illinois, according to the test of my oath. Congratulations.
Mayor, while you're doing that, if I could just introduce Barry's family as well, who are with him tonight.
Please do.
If you could stand for the photo opportunity, of course. His wife Tara is here. Son Gabe. Son Will. His daughter Anne. And, most importantly, as well, his mother Lois. So if you could all come forward.
Take a picture, y'all. Our next item of business is our presentations. Chief Snyder, can you please come to present the Meritorious Service Award for Fire Safety Education and Awareness to Justin Spiegel, AKA Sparky?
Thank you, Your Honor and council. It's my privilege this evening to unmask Sparky. Man, I created a little photo montage here of some of his finer moments in his work. I think you'll see that he has a flair for his role in our department. And so we wanted to recognize the many years that he has performed the function. As you can see, tens of the lighting of the commons, homecoming parade, some of our recruiting efforts and special events to call attention to the importance of smoke detectors and others. We just couldn't, we have too many pictures probably to put up on the board here. But this is Justin. He's been a part of our fire department family for many years. He's the son of retired lieutenant and former fire marshal Jerry Spiegel. And so there, his mother Deanna, sister Kylie is here, and then other friends and acquaintances of Justin that wanted to support him in this moment. So without further ado, we're going to present, first, he gets some gifts this evening. So the first one is a challenge point, and it's a chief's challenge point, and not many get these. So this is a privilege of mine to give you to this. And then he also gets a, we created a little Meritorious Service Award for Fire Safety Education and Awareness plaque with Sparky's name on it. So he's going to have that as a little take home gift. One of our special items that means a lot to us is a sweater that we wear in the administrative side that his father wore while he was an employee with us. And we stole it, I don't think he knows it. But yeah, it doesn't have, it still has Jay Spiegel on it, but we added Sparky as a label. And so Justin, we hope you wear that proudly when the weather chills a little bit, cools off. And we have one last item that's a special, new award that we're giving. And this is pretty special artwork that we think will be very nice for Justin to have on his wall and signify his efforts to the citizens of Moline.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, one more picture.
4.2, Ms. Whitley, Community and Economic Development Presentation of August Residential Neighbor of the Month Award to Dave DeJager of 3415 34th Street, and the August Commercial Neighbor of the Month Award to Dr. Michael Richards of Kennedy Chiropractic Center, 1712 15th Street Place.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd get away from us, too.
Well, every month from April to October, the NPC Committee receives nominations for residential and commercial property. For our residential, it is Dave and Sue DeJager. These are some pictures of their home. And this nomination came in from one of their neighbors. It was submitted electronically. They just said that they maintain their yard, and it's very beautiful, and they're a good asset to the neighborhood. So I would ask Dave to step up and receive his certificate. And Dave, would you like a picture with Mayor Ray Potty? And would you like to say any words at all? You want to take this and step up here, and the mayor will come down, and I'll grab my camera?
You might as well just stay down there.
And keep up the good work. We appreciate it. Your neighbors appreciate it, too, so. So the next award we have, Kennedy Chiropractic up on 16th Street, applied for a facade grant last year and received about $17,000. This is how it looks today and previously. If you want to go to that one for me?
Looks a lot smaller.
It's a little smaller.
Really? Really? Look at the space.
Yeah, that's how it looked back in 2021. And then he hired a contractor and took advantage of our facade program and made those improvements into how it looks today. I did try to reach them. I don't know if they're in the audience. Unfortunately, they've been on vacation, and they come back tomorrow. So I just wanted to put it into the record that this is our commercial property, whether, again, they took advantage of our facade program, made some improvements, and it looks remarkable today. So just to thank them for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Is there public comment this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Please come forward, state your name.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeff Leroy, and I am here to speak on behalf of the variance to the Section 6-114F for Metronet. If you are not familiar, I have pictures of this particular area, but there's essentially seven poles that we already have strand up and installed on these poles. And we are seeking the variance to go ahead and finish installing our fiber underneath the maintenance program. If you're not familiar with the area, the roadway is very narrow. The sidewalk's only about three foot, four inches, seven inches through most of that area. So trying to bore or pull the sidewalk out is going to cause a significant disruption to the community, et cetera. So we believe it's in the best interest of the community to go ahead and allow us to install the fiber on the strand that we have up on those poles versus tearing up the sidewalk and streets or anything like that. That is all I had, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure. Excuse me. Did you sign in so that I could pull your name off that sheet?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there questions on the agenda? Hearing none, we move to our agenda items. 7.1, A Resolution Authorizing a Varyance to Chapter 6, Rights of Way in Public Property Uses, Section 1114, Location of Facilities of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Waiving the Requirement for Underground Location of Utility Facilities. Mr. Vitas.
Yes, if I can, Mayor, and members of council. As you know, Metronet has made a request under the City Code, Chapter 6, very specifically for a waiver of Section 114 with respect to the aerial placement of their fiber line, continuation of their fiber line in the city in relationship to versus undergrounding or burying that cable. You know, we are in the midst of, of course, discussions with the company itself. And rather than pursue a waiver at this point, those discussions are well underway, and we anticipate concluding those discussions this month and bringing forward to council a recommendation for an agreement with Metronet going forward for your approval. That being said, and knowing that we are looking for a global solution to not only this issue tonight, but the previous issues that arose over the last several months, it'd be staff's recommendation beyond that of Director of Engineering, David Drier, that we table this matter for 30 days until such time that we're able to conclude our global negotiations with their company and then bring forward a solution for not only this particular installation, but the entire city as a whole. And that would be staff's recommendation going forward.
Thank you.
Motion to table?
Second.
All right. And just for further clarification, there's no discussion, not a motion to table? Thank you, ma'am. Yes, the first was a motion by Alderman Waldron, second by Alderman Moyer.
Just a point of clarification, is this table indefinitely or table for 30 days?
30 days.
Okay.
30 days per the staff recommendation. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. We have no others this evening, sir?
No, 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 Madam Mayor.
So we move to our informationals. 8.1, Mr. Vitas, the August Status and Information Report.
Sure. As you know, every month, we've been, since the first of the year, been releasing the status and information report on all projects going on by the city throughout the organization. And before you, tonight, for your information and for the information to the general public and those beyond our borders, we've compiled that report for your information and public release. If there's questions on any items, I think I've addressed some of those privately, but that information that is presented is complete.
All right. Any questions, comments? All right, we move to 8.2, Honorary Street Designations Policy. Mr. Vitas?
Yes. I don't want this to be my show, so where's Michael Toy? There you are. Come on up to that podium, Michael. Shortly after Michael started, I approached him and provided him with some information with respect to other similar programs here in Illinois, I believe, in Peoria, as well as in the city of Chicago. And as you know, as you've traveled in other cities across not only the state, but in other parts of the country, you'll often find that cities try to recognize individuals and sometimes even companies. But typically, it's individuals who have contributed significantly to the city itself, whether that is somebody who's in industry or somebody who's in private, you know, small businesses, people who entered the sports and entertainment industries or politics locally. The list goes on. And it gives us an opportunity to take certain locations in the community, either as directed by council or as requested by individuals, typically family individuals, to name short portions of the street system in honor of those individuals. In some instances, those signs remain permanently. In some cases, they're removed every 12 months, but typically that doesn't happen. Once they go up, they typically stay up. So we're presenting council, and Mike, you can go through the details, but presenting council with the opportunity to do something to recognize significant businesses and citizens of Moline throughout the community.
Mr. Toy, do you have anything to add?
Sure.
Yeah.
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. So to fill in the particulars of the signs themselves, these signs will be similar to the street ID signs, which are basically six inches by 24 inches. The only difference is our signs are green and these will be brown. We originally put in there that we would end them with way. After further discussion, we decided that place might be a better ending for them. So it would say honorary, or there would be honorary at the top, John Doe Place, and that would be the sign. For the applicants, there would be a $30 non-refundable application fee and then a $300 insulation fee, which would be refundable if their request wasn't approved. This would be forwarded, this information, to the Complete Streets Committee for review and recommendation. And if they approved, then it would come before the City Council for final approval, and then the Public Works Department would do the installations.
Any questions?
It's made permanent.
They can be permanent. I did some research with a number of cities. Some of them said that they were only going to be good for a year, and they've never taken a single one down. In fact, the only one sign that I know was taken down, if you want to go a little bit further outside, is the city of St. Louis, where they named part, portion of Interstate 70 as Mark McGuire Highway. Unfortunately, after the...
That's terrible. That's a terrible shame.
I'll leave the ads in the side, you know, if there was ever...
Yes, Mr. Moyer.
Should there be some criteria, though? I mean, this isn't like vanity plates up on every street, right?
No, they actually should have made a cultural, economic, educational, intellectual, political, or a scientific contribution, something along those lines. Also, too, I did talk to Rock Island, and they put up a sign for a military person who was killed in the Gulf War. So they honored him by having a sign for it.
Yeah. I felt that with the 150th sesquicentennial, it just made sense to do something like this in the downtown because you have a historic downtown, you have a historic community to begin with, but you have a historic downtown and it's part of the, you know, national historic districts. So why not, you know, start to recognize those significant people who made the city what it is today and as great as it is?
Mr. Went?
Thanks. Right now, is Jim King the only one we have that I'm aware of in Moline?
There's a few of them, I think.
Where are the other ones?
There used to be some on 10th Street where I used to live. They're not named after me or anything. So you don't have to take them down. But I think there are, and you're right, once they go up, they don't seem to come down.
Mr. Walden?
The last one I remember going up was Harvest Road. And most people, Dick would remember it. It was Cold Town, Black Hawk. And at one point, they switched both of them to Harvest, and that faded away quickly.
Yes, Mr. Went.
Well, and I understand that. I mean, I think that was the idea of, because that road is 36th and 38th at two intersections and trying to, people talk about Black Hawk and Cold Town. But when you're talking about individuals, my only concern is having talked with some other people who live in some of the suburbs, that sometimes these things become political, that, you know, where... And in that, you know, if we're going to do this, I'd like it to be like a supermajority, you know, like six out of the eight have to, so it's basically, okay, we all agree this. I'd hate for these to get to a 4-4 tie with the mayor having to break and those sorts of things. And those sorts of things wind up dividing our community rather than doing what I think that the intent is that.
Can you remind us what the proposal says about the vote? It just says it'll be taken to the Complete Streets and the council for approval?
Yes, it's a simple majority, I believe, for the council. I did research, the other cities I researched did not have a supermajority requirement. That was the five or six that I researched.
All right. So we would need to give direction to staff in some, or to know if they're, what the will of the council is?
I'd like to hear from everybody else, but I just think I would prefer something, if this is going to go down this road, that it should be something like that because I would, I think that it could wind up being a hornet's nest that causes more problems than it should be.
And I agree with Alderman Went. You know, you don't want it to turn into, you know, everybody's favorite teacher, and then after we get through the founding fathers, then we start looking for, and we go deep, deep onto the bench, and then it starts to split, or someone argues, well, why didn't my grandfather's name get on it when this guy got on it? So if the council agrees with the, you know, the committee, I think the whole council should agree. There shouldn't be any question about it, and that would be a great way to guarantee that.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien?
I guess I still don't understand. You're worried about it being political. I mean, how would it be political? I mean, I think you'll find, at least when these things happen, it seems like it's usually unanimous. When they name it after, I don't know, say they name it after...
Milhane Field.
Milhane Field or something. I don't think anybody's going to push back on that. You know, I mean, even people that might not like that person, if they're, you know... I just don't see why we need a supermajority. I mean, it's probably going to be a supermajority every time.
Mr. Went?
You're making the exact argument. If that's what it is, then what's the difference? I mean, you avoid those situations because there are a number of communities over time where councils made decisions to name certain things, and we're seeing it all over the place, where they're now going back and pulling names. I mean, Mark McGuire is probably a gentle example compared to what some other communities have recently had to do and the fights that wound up happening because of those things. I just, you know, if it's already going to be a supermajority or unanimous, then let's just put it into the code so we don't wind up in a situation where we wind up with somebody, because it's not just coming from us. If someone from the community came up and said, hey, I think Joe Lo should be the person, and they happen to be good friends with four people on council, you know, and the other four were like, I don't think that it raises to that level. I just think you avoid some real issues by doing it, if it's going to be that way, anyway.
Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Your Honor. I could give you an example of a former mayor named Fifth Avenue after, would you vote for that?
Which mayor would that be?
Well, leave that to your imagination.
All right, gentlemen, we need to give the staff some very clear guidance on what to bring back. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I think that changing it to a supermajority, to an unanimous, doesn't remove the politics, it just changes the politics. And I don't think it's the responsibility of we as a body to look for opportunities to pull that back. And politics is a matter of public perception. Politics is not a matter of what we're supposed to legislate it out in a way. And you inherently are going to have it. This is a political body, and I just, I don't see why we would apply a higher threshold to this than we do for passing a resolution or an ordinance change. And I am not supporting that.
I would agree with Alderman Schmidt. I don't think it needs to be separated out with a supermajority vote. I mean, we're talking about maybe a temporary name. In a lot of cases, I mean, we started out with this being a temporary thing. And, you know, they turn into being, I mean, we're not renaming Avenue of the Cities, anything. I mean, these are neighborhood streets with this. It could be Avenue of the Cities, but right now, we're talking about just neighborhood streets, right?
It could be any street, but we put it in there for one block only, so...
One block only.
One block only with a maximum of two signs.
Supermajority for one block only.
All right. I have a quick question, and then I do see your hand. Remind us, I'm sorry that I couldn't get my computer up to see the document, but again, it's for one year? Or where did you land on how long for indefinite?
There were, we...
Okay, got it. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
And as we brought up the point of renaming Avenue of the Cities, we make it harder to make an honorary than we would to actually rename the street itself. Yeah.
I see. Thank you. Mr. Mar?
So, thank you. So that would be my only suggestion is to find some way of potentially considering the retirement of these things after, you know...
Yeah, have a definite timeline versus an indefinite.
For reconsideration every decade or something.
Okay. Mr. Mercedes, and then Mr. Vitas?
Just to follow up on that, I mean, if you were to establish a timeframe, whether it's a year, or two, or five, you know, at the end of the time when the sign is removed, I mean, if the applicant was the person who drove the request, the sign could be actually given to them. You know how people like to steal signs and put them in their garages, or in their man caves, or she, you know, she caves? It might be a good idea just to return the sign to whoever actually paid for it in the first place, if it's not a council-driven, you know, request.
There'd be no reason to take it down after so long, but sometimes they just become like, you don't know who the person is.
It's a check-in.
Yeah.
Oh, it's okay, Bob. Thank you. Mr. Mercedes?
Thank you, Your Honor. And don't, in some communities, don't they usually do this to honor somebody who actually passed away, who might be a celebrity or a hero or something? Yeah, yeah. And when it becomes political, it might be somebody like Martin Luther King, or a civil rights activist, or somebody of that sort. I would hope that as a council, if we see anything that, we see questionable, that, or any council, that we can have candid discussions as to whether or not to allow those things. But, yeah, I think for the most part, we're going to get people from the neighborhood supporting these sort of things, and they won't be divisive. And if they do, well, there's a system to make sure that, a process that we don't see those things through, so.
And we did add in there that it could be taken down at any time. And if it did, then we would give the sign to the applicant's fam, to the family or however that would work out.
Okay, thank you. Mr. May?
And it's my understanding, too, that these are only people with ties to the city. So this is not opening it up to Dalai Lama way, you know, these are, we're talking about Molineers.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Do you have enough clarity? Mr. Went?
I mean, to that point, I mean, it's whatever, this council votes, right? Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dar.
Will this come back as an ordinance? Is that the plan, or...
I believe it would come back to Cal as a policy.
Probably as a policy.
A program.
Yeah. It'd be a program that we would run through the Complete Streets Committee, and then it would come forward as a recommendation from them to council for resolution, probably a resolution-driven decision.
But I guess my question is, is there going to be a vote on this, or is this...
Yes, absolutely. That really requires a vote.
No, but for the, I mean, we've had situations where policies then just start getting enacted, and it wasn't a vote of the council, it was just, we took this as direction, so we just started doing it.
No, we, this will come forward for a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
8.3, Demolition Review by the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Vitas and Mr. Foley? a process that we don't see those things through, so.
And we did add in there that it could be taken down at any time, and if it did, then we would give the sign to the applicant's fam- to the family or however that would work out.
Okay, thank you. To me.
And it's, it's my understanding too, that these are only people with ties to the city, so this is not opening it up to Dalai Lama Way. You know, these are mo- we're talking about Moliners.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Do, do you have enough clarity, Mr. Went?
I mean, to, to that point, I, I mean, it's whatever this council votes, right?
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Dar. Oh, yes, Mr. Went.
Will this come back as an ordinance? Is that the plan, or?
Uh, I believe it would come back to Cal as a policy.
Probably as a policy.
A program.
Yeah. It'd be a program that we would run through the Complete Streets Committee, and then it would come forward as a recommendation from them to council for resolution, probably a resolution-driven decision.
But, but I guess my question is, are, is, is there going to be a vote on this, or is this? Okay.
Yes, absolutely. That really requires a vote.
No, but for the poli- I mean, we've had situations where policies then just start getting enacted, and it wasn't a vote of the council, it was just, we, we took this as direction, so we just started doing it.
No, we, this will come forward for a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight point three, demolition review by the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Vitas and Mr. Foley?
Mayor, Alderman, I am mostly here to answer questions. I don't know if you want me to start with how this got here to this point? I mean, I wasn't here when it happened, but I read through minutes, things like that, if you want me to go over that?
Um, well, the council should have read the background, but if you could give a brief synopsis, that would be good.
The council did not receive background.
There was an email the other day, was there not?
Okay, so I got here, I, I took most of this from the minutes, and asking some questions, but there was a suggestion back in two thousand nineteen, in December, a suggestion to, at the HPC, review buildings over fifty years old prior to issuing a demolition permit. Still, for, was proposed that the commission consider modeling the Cedar Rapids Iowa ordinance. And then going through several more meetings, the Historic Preservation Commission. So Mr. Sinatra was appointed as a person to go over draft of that amendment. And was surprised that, to see that the building codes demolition section did not cross reference the historic preservation ordinance in regards to certificate of appropriateness requirements, and that such a cross should be added to the codes. Ms. Sandberg appointed Mr. Sinatra as a head of the committee to address, address drafting an amendment pertaining to demolition of buildings in excess of fifty years old, and that was March of two thousand twenty. And then it went through several drafts. It was reviewed by municipal link, city council, corporate council, I won't go into all those little details. It reached the committee with a hole in September, and there was an amendment proposed to chapter eight, building and construction services, and chapter twenty-five, planning development, for the HPC to review demolitions. Then Alderman, Dick Potter proposed a requirement that require applications received by the building division for demolition of a structure fifty years or older to be submitted to the HPC, Historic Preservation Commission, of course, view prior to a permit by the building official. The HPC would have a maximum of fifteen business days to review the permit application, determine the structure was subject to, which was subject to demolition historically, and that for the review of the structure. It is determined to be historically significant. The HPC may, they say, written hold on the permit application for a period of maximum sixty days. And the catch that you saw in the agenda today is what they wanted. At the time, it was the second draft that's in there. I don't have a copy of whatever the first draft was. And then, when it finally got to council back then, it was a lot longer, it was more complicated, there was things added to it that the HPC did not ask for. So this, that you see, and this attachment to the agenda is what they had asked for originally. So we're not, we didn't attach the proposed whole ordinance that was brought forth at that time. So it has been on the Historic Planning Commission agenda since that time before I got here. They mentioned that I was arriving in one of their minutes. And most recently, in April, Commissioner Potter was going to introduce the proposal at April twenty-sixth, City Council. That didn't happen. It was discussed again at the Historic Preservation Commission, so they re- they changed the original sixty days hold to a thirty days hold on. And they wanted that sent forth, that would send the planning commission, recommendation of city administrator. Them to look at it. They basically didn't endorse that, and that was on May eleventh. And it went back to HPC for the staff to check. And it finally got to you here today. Then I had some questions. Alderman Went sent some questions about this. He asked that at the top of the attached document, it says second draft. Can you let me know what you made from the first draft to the second draft? That I've not been able to find out exactly what that was. I asked Commissioner Potter here. He, he says he doesn't recall exactly what it was. It may have been something like changing the holds of the number of days that it would be on hold, that kind of thing, but he wasn't too sure. Was this issue brought to the planning commission to review? Yes, and they basically endorsed it, more or less as it was. Does this cover complete demolitions? What happens if they are only tearing down part of the structure? That's not really addressed there, but it would be, it should be the same thing, whether it's partial or full, I would think. I believe this came up a few years ago, and the council gave direction to the Historic Preservation to come back with a list of fifty or seventy-five historic properties that would be subject to such an ordinance, but I'm not sure if that went anywhere. The concern was that anything built prior to nineteen seventy-two that might need to wait three weeks for a demolition, and possibly another two months might be too cumbersome. If the building owner has no advance notice, that their property may be subject to this process. That brings up a good point, because as a certified local government, which our Historic Preservation Commission is, we have agreement with the state. We're supposed to be surveying properties to see what we have in the city historically significant. So that should be an ongoing program. That's an agreement we have with the state to be doing that. We're not really actually doing that. So to pick an arbitrary number like fifty to seventy-five historic properties really isn't a good idea. You basically should go like by district or something like that, and look at all the properties in there to see what's there, what styles they are. Is it Italianate? Is it Greek Revival? Blah, blah, blah. What, what years are they? Is it, have they been significantly modified to where they have lost their historic value, things like that? So you start with a survey to find out what you have. You don't pick a number like fifty or seventy-five, just go find those numbered buildings or something. Even though they do have a list of buildings that they have found that are historically significant, I haven't actually gone through that whole list myself. It said, I believe, or he says, I believe most other communities identify properties in advance, and that new owners are aware when they purchase the property, it might be subject to such an additional review. Can you provide other communities that have similar hold on properties that are over fifty years old? I would say most places do that either by designating specific buildings or districts, and didn't really have a whole lot of time to look into that. But, for instance, the city of Chicago, they have permanent holds, they list them, so there's been fifteen demolition permits on hold in two thousand twenty-two through July fifth. Most of them were released, meaning they could go forward with the demolition. Looked at city of Aurora, it applies only to downtown. DC and DF zones, a certificate of appropriateness is required for a demolition permit. That means it has to go in front of their Historic Preservation Commission before a permit could be approved. In the city of Naperville, certificate of appropriateness is required for certain demolition permits in the historic district. County of Will, look on their demolition application. It says, I understand that proposed demolition may be subject to the review of the Will County Historic Preservation Commission. The purpose of this review is to determine a property's historic significance, its ability of its preservation, and whether they need additional documentation in the event that the application may review of the HPC. Not be used until the HPC review takes place, and findings are provided, should HPC be required, the application would be submitted. Over what? There are exceptions for safety and so forth, as also mentioned. City of Lake Forest, please review your action summary, your certificate of appropriateness from the meeting against the committee. Copy of any of the required information indicated on that summary. How applicable that is to permit. I don't know. And looking at Cedar Rapids, where this was modeled from, in their Historic Preservation Commission meetings, which I took an agenda from October twenty-first of two thousand twenty-one, so that under their action items, they have a review of a certificate of appropriateness. That's something that they get from their Historic Preservation Commission before they can proceed with the building permit to do modifications, that kind of thing. Then they have another section, demolitions. So they have one here, home and a garage. So somebody put a motion to hold the demolition of thirty days for investigation. Under criteria, whatever. Division that the investigation is likely required to the thirty-day hold, and staff and chair notify, then the hold can be administered. Administrative. Leave release. Excuse me. So then they have another permit for a quad, another permit for a house, another permit for a garage, and they're releasing the holds on those permits here.
So, Mr. Foley, you've given us a wide variety of background on places that have something similar.
What I could find, this particular one is from Cedar Rapids. I got an actual agenda in their case. So then, then there's two more where they're on hold for thirty days, forty days.
So they have a lot of variety, is what you're saying?
They do a lot of, of these reviews, apparently demolishes in Cedar Rapids. So that's just what this shows.
So this is back because it was discussed by planning commission and needs to get resolved in some way, shape, or form, so we open it up to the council for discussion. Mr. Moore, is that a hand?
Yeah, thank you. So I supported this a couple of years ago, and it's been, it's been, I think, on, I don't know, we tabled it, I think, at the time. I supported it back then, I support it now. I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with the fifteen business day review, but, you know, I think it's important because it's not always protecting the building. Sometimes it's about salvaging materials that might be in it that could be used to, on, on another project or whatnot, and then photo documentation. And I spent quite a bit of time talking with Dick Potter and Parvus Sandberg and others about this, and there are lots, lots of cases and where, you know, this doesn't come up all that often, but when it does come up, it can be significant, and it's really not gonna come up that often, but when it does, like you say, I think, I think it's important, I think we should do it.
Yep. Yes. Mr. Williams, then Mr. Went.
And I agree with Alderman lawyer, and when we had the discussion, part of it was that we wanted the commission to go back and look, because we're not such a large community that you can't go out and identify a zone like downtown, and then reach out and find fifty or seventy-five specific, very specific historical homes or businesses throughout the city. So that's not like a gotcha. If someone then decides to purchase a building next door to tear it down, and then they find out it has historical significance, not able to do what they originally planned to. I mean, it's two thousand twenty-two, you should be able to know by now what significant, and it sounds like the state of Illinois encourages it, that you, you have a significantly, a significant historical building in your city, instead of just carte blanche saying, we'll review everything that comes through, and we'll decide at that time if there's any historical significance, and play kind of a gotcha game. So I think somewhere in here is something that everybody can live with, that does what it, what we wanted to do is preserve our buildings.
Thank you. One second, Mr. Went. So based on Mr. Williams' comment, and your comment that said we should be surveying to keep up with what the state asks us to do.
Yeah, that's an agreement.
Is it possible for you to do that survey and then bring this back in a full form?
Uh, the Historic Preservation Commission had discussed that. They actually wanted this to come before the, the council first, but, so that is normally a grant-funded thing, a matching grant, so seventy percent by the, really federal government passed through the state Historic Preservation Office, and then the city would come up with thirty percent. It should be an ongoing thing. So there was discussion, if the commission should be survey the whole entire city, or do quadrants, which they seem to focus on, but we'd have to do some kind of a request for proposals, see how much that's gonna cost, and that kind of thing, and...
Okay, so that's...
You could apply for these grants, but the state does want a consultant to be doing that, not, not just like staff going out and surveying, or commissioners going out and surveying.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. In, in doing this, I actually got a, a message back from, from Barb. Somehow she got my, the questions that I had, I had asked. And, and to the points I think that we're talking about in, in a number of the examples that you had said, was, you know, I would be a hundred percent in favor of if we did an overlay of our downtown and said, hey, you have to get a certificate, what'd you say, of appropriateness?
Certificate of appropriateness.
Or even a special use permit to, to demo, because there are decidedly things in our downtown that we do not want destroyed, and if they can be saved, need to be saved. And outside of that, I think the numbers start to dwindle quickly. There are probably some things in Old Town, in Uptown, and a few homes throughout the, the community that, that I think bear having this, this protection on it without question. I know from, from my real job, you know, like in Rock Island, they've identified a number of properties, and you know, before you purchase, that, you know, that this property has a higher level of, if you want to do repairs, modifications, tear down, additions, whatever, that you're buying a historic home, and with that comes these additional responsibilities. My, my problem with this is, and I think this is what the problem with the, the previous council had with it, with, we're trying to get to is, if, if I'm a developer or whatever, and I go and buy a nineteen seventy-one home up in Homewood that is dilapidated or whatever, and, you know, I, I buy it, my plan is I'm going to tear it down, I'm going to build a new house on it, I've got construction seasons, I've got costs, I've got carrying costs, I've got all these things happening, and all of a sudden, I get a hold put on it, I buy it in April, and, and, and I do appreciate, because I think the first thing that went out said sixty days, now it's down to thirty days, that helps a little bit, but if you're not able to even know that you can, or be able to demo this for three weeks plus a month, which is about two months into it, you may miss your summer, be able to do your construction season to get it under roof before the winter comes. And that could really be a detriment to people who are trying to do it, and, and that's why I think we should be more of a scalpel here than a hatchet, just saying an overlay over everything. I mean, to, to Sean's comments, almost all of those talked about these in certain districts.
So do you have a suggestion of a particular district or districts to focus on?
Downtown, I, I would feel comfortable with an overlay of all of downtown. Basically, what we, we've got like seven or eight different overlays over downtown, and, and all of those areas probably should have, have this. And then if we want to specifically identify, I'd be all for applying for a grant, doing matching, whatever that takes. I just have a, a problem with it, you know, somebody buys a, you know, nineteen sixty-seven house that just happens to be, and every year we go, that number moves forward, and then soon there's gonna be houses that are, you know, my age, and we're putting holds on when there's people who want to invest in our community, and they've got no historical significance. It's just another bureaucratic jump, and so I'd like to avoid that.
Mr. Timmy.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a few things to unpack here. I don't think we should conflate historic sites with this ordinance, because this is just allowing the, the Historical Preservation Committee to... just allowing the Historical Preservation Committee to evaluate if either it is significant historically or if it might have components they could salvage from the property. And likewise, they don't have the authority to prevent demolition, just put it on hold, and that's only in the most extreme circumstances. To the point where a house is not historically significant, it would actually, the, the commission only has fifteen days in order to put the hold on it. So we're now, it isn't even thirty days we're talking about, because the, the language even says they have fifteen days in order to evaluate if they want to hold on it.
Fifteen business days.
Sure. So my question is, is there a project in which, most of our demolitions are demolished and then they're left empty? And I'm not seeing this like really quick turnaround that needs to happen so quickly that the margin of error is going to be fifteen business days, and then we're completely destroying all development or business opportunities in the community. So I don't really think that this is as detrimental as it's being portrayed. I, I just, I don't see that. And I think that the added value of allowing for the research and salvaging of materials and ornaments or whatever it is way outweighs the, any negatives that come on.
Mr. Waldron.
Like some others have voiced, I supported this a couple of years ago, and I still do, especially when you consider that we still have our input, if that's the case. We can always supersee the HPC and say, no, thank you for your advice, going ahead. So we've always had that control, and I support this ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
How many demolitions do we have? How many permits for demolition do we have in a year, as an estimate?
That I don't really know. I have to check the Building Division on that, but it's not that many.
See someone say six.
Six to eight.
Six to eight. Okay. Mr. Moyer.
And, and although six to eight, the ones that qualify are even less than that, right?
True. In fact, I did an example of four. Quite a, quite a sweet example. That gave us, we said it was nothing, soon after, five days.
Thank you. So, so the, the guidance at the moment is, I'm hearing some concerns and some desire to look into the survey opportunities and be in line with what's expected of us at the, I believe, did you say state and federal or?
Well, it's, it's a federal, state, local partnership.
Okay.
So it, it works both ways.
Right. So that's, that's one piece, but in terms of this particular ordinance, what else do you need for direction to put something together to bring it back to council?
Well, I am here to find that out.
Mr. Schmidt.
So my biggest concern with moving to a process that is going through a register and building that out is that that then is outdated, and now we're ten, fifteen years down the road before we update it again. And that sort of, as we rely on grant funds, relying on having the staffing to be able to get that work done, whereas by having a set time period, yes, every year, buildings that are newer are captured, but they're all fifty years old at the time they're captured. And every year, those buildings are closer to being that more older and more likely to be historic. So I think moving to something where we would remove something to say, and waiting on this register is not something that I think is, is a prudent decision for us.
Mr. Potter, did you want to come to the microphone?
May I?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to clear up a misconception there that I don't understand from Mr. Foley, but that any survey that has a certified local government status that we would do is, is basically applying for a grant from the state, and that we would, we would be required to hire outside people, and this is a very lengthy process, it would take a long time. And then just to get back to the ordinance, as a number of people have said, this is purely a pause. This is just, just an opportunity for us to, number one, promote historic preservation, to, gives us an opportunity to work with a developer or anybody else who wants to do a demolition and say, is there some other, you know, avenue that we can pursue? If that doesn't work, documentation and salvage could always be an opportunity for us. But I, I want to be clear, number one, it's a pause, and number two, I think, I don't think you want to confuse our, and it's a need for the city as a certified local government with a Historic Preservation Commission. It'd be, it would be a lengthy process, we would even have to be approved at the state level to do this. Staff, staff wouldn't.
I'm pretty sure not. We have to hopefully approve those. Yes, the state has a, a list of contractors that we.
And that would normally be like a seventy, thirty, or an eighty, twenty split with the pass through money that comes through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Waldron.
I think we're doing staff a little bit of a disservice here. We've all got sixteen different opinions about what should happen, and I feel their pain about what they're going to write and bring back to us. So I think it would be appropriate for us, all of us, if we have certain motions, if we want to go with what's written, let staff and Mr. Foley and Bob know. If you want to make an amendment to what's written, I think this is the appropriate time to do, so the poor devils have some direction on what way to go to bring back to us.
Thank you. Anyone with a motion? Mr. Timmy?
I'll make a motion to approve, instruct staff to bring what is written with typo corrections back to the, the future committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, second by Alderman O'Brien. A discussion, Mr. Went.
Yeah, I'd like to add an amendment that they also come back with an overlay district with a higher level of historic preservation, whatever it takes for the demolition appropriateness or special use or whatever, in conjunction with whatever the Historic Preservation Council Committee.
Commission.
Commission. C started something. That work with them, but some higher level of restrictions for demolitions of downtown buildings.
Point of information, we do have a historic district designated in the downtown area that has specific property, and it's a building that are considered contributing and not contributing. So there is part of that.
But, but what's the limitation on demolitions of those?
They should.
In structure, they should come in for a certificate of appropriateness.
Again, that's a federal.
Yes.
So it's a local decision.
Basically, but.
But is that something that?
Well, hang on, we need to stick to, that was a point of clarification you were making. And we need a second to your amendment if necessary.
I want a pointed clarification on what he just said.
Okay.
So is that like a special use permit, where that, that, that has to be?
It's called exactly a certificate of appropriateness, so it's something that's set up.
Just administratively done, or is that voted on by the Plan Commission or brought to council?
It is the Historic Preservation Commission that issues those.
Mr.
So it's in chapter twenty-five of the municipal code.
Mr. Veedlock wanted to weigh in on that point of clarification.
So, yeah, strict appropriateness, so basically, when somebody wants to do something to a historic building, either in a historic district or a contributing structure outside the historic district, they have to come before to the Historic Preservation Commission. They have a set of standards, they have to look at, they're Secretary of Interior standards. If it does not meet that, they cannot get a strict appropriateness. So their property owner's next step for relief would be to actually appeal it to City Council. City Council can override HPC if it's an economic hardship or something like that. So once again, council has the ability to override the Historic Preservation Commission or to agree with, with what they're saying, so.
Yes, Mr. Went.
So like when, maybe the dispatch is a good, good example.
It's, it's not, because, yeah, it's not a contributing structure.
But like raised appliance building or something like that, those things would have gone through that process and still got demolished?
They are supposed to, and what typically will happen is, I mean, basically you cannot, under the Secretary of Interior standards, you cannot demolish a historic building. So it's kind of one of these things that, because of, A, the state law and how we are a certified local government, and B, the federal law, you can't demolish it. And so HPC would have to tell the applicant, sorry, no, we cannot grant you that. They would then come before council, and if council made a decision that, yes, we think this will better the neighborhood, or, you know, that there is an economic hardship for the property owner or something like that, you can override that.
Safety issue.
Yeah, and, and we've had that happen in, before, where there might be a building that is a safety issue, and, you know, the building official says it really needs to come down.
Okay, so we need to stay on our order here. Are you making an amendment?
But then I'll withdraw if, if that does everything you say.
All right.
It doesn't seem like historically it has.
Is there further discussion, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah. So my, when I read the ordinance brought before us, there is the call out that this, this ordinance, this process would apply to any building within a locally designated historic district, which was my understanding that that would be our downtown area. Is that correct?
I don't have it in front of me, but if it says local historic district, that we only have the downtown historic district at this time.
And so the, the process that we were just describing, that is the federal or state process that is dictated for that historic district already in place?
Yeah.
But this actually goes a little further in that whole process, or is this not necessarily a different?
Let Mr. Veedlock answer.
I have the ordinance, my friend. So, so what this will do is, it would be for buildings who do not have to obtain a strict appropriateness. So it would be a building that is not on the register, is not a contributing structure, is not located within a designated historic district. What this says is any structure or building that is fifty years or older and is not required to obtain a strict appropriateness would then have the thirty day hold placed upon that. So this is an additional level of protection for maybe buildings that are already, don't have that underlying protection, either being in a historic district or being a contributing structure.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Harry Nun, could you please restate the motion for us, clerk? He withdrew his motion.
Oh, your original, I'm sorry, here, I've got it.
Alderman Timian moved to approve, well, it was Alderman Timian, second by Alderman O'Brien, move to approve it going back to staff to clean up the ordinance as proposed and then brought back to council for our approval.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Have your direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one other item informational, chapter four, alcohol and liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, housekeeping update.
You all know me, I believe that you skipped.
I skipped? Oh.
Thirty-five.
I'm so sorry, I apologize, I wrote my notes in the, oh, okay. Sorry, chapter thirty-five, land, zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances regarding the definition of family and accessory dwelling units. Ms. Kostopoulos.
Thank you. And with us today, Remoli, is David Silverman to follow up on comments by council regarding the ADU ordinance. David, are you still there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay.
Take it.
Margaret, do you want me to take it for a minute, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I received comments from Alderman Went and Alderman Schmidt, and I put that in the memo to you. There was a common, a lot of common points, and then there were just some open questions, particularly about enforcement issues and things like that. I did not redline the ordinance that I presented to you about a month ago. I thought that could get confusing. So at this point, we're just making sure that there's no other comments before City Council sends us over to the Plan Commission for a public hearing.
David, is, was there some conflicting comments, especially regarding definition of family?
Yeah, I, so it seemed to me, and I don't want to, like, Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Went, if I mischaracterize your positions on this, please correct me, it seemed like the position, at least of those two Aldermen, was to open up the availability of ADUs to a broader audience, as opposed to just people who have some contractual relationship or some familial relationship to the principal dwelling occupants.
That is my position.
All right. Can we establish for the rest of the council where you are at with that particular item? I see heads nodding yes, we should open up, I can see thumbs up. We should open up the definition, and our two.
Thumbs down here.
Okay. Well, because this is the kind of thing that's going to get written up and come up for a vote, we, we know where you stand on this at the moment, and it hasn't changed, so I would imagine, you know, getting this written up and brought to council for an actual vote is what really needs to happen.
Yes.
Mike, I wanted to take a step back and ask a little bit about that process and going back to Plan Commission. So obviously, because this had come from Plan Commission, but I think council's vision and Plan Commission's are very different, so I'm not sure if returning it to Plan Commission is a right use of anyone's time, but I do understand that there are hearings that will have to follow, but is that something where we would be then revising it and issuing it back, or how does that process need to go?
Okay, so what Plan Commission did is they, in, within a workshop setting, not the context of a public hearing, but just a public meeting with a workshop, they hashed through all of the issues, they developed that table that I think I presented to City Council a while back, and then we ultimately drafted the ordinance that was presented to you last month. And so what I think we wanted to do was get your input to get a final, well, lack of the, lack of a better word, a final draft that Plan Commission could then hold a public hearing on. And then, you're right, at the end of the day, this is still going to come back to you for a vote.
Yeah. So the public hearing is a requirement for this particular update? Got it?
It is.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt.
So are we, are we to guide the creation of the language used for that public hearing, or are we to provide feedback to the Planning Commission?
I think the best approach would be to just, as you've done already, provide feedback. We can build that into the ordinance draft that they're going to review, and then they can then make a recommendation back to you on whether to approve it as, including your input or with whatever other revisions they have. But ultimately, at the end of the day, this is a legislative decision of the city, and what the City Council wants is what's ultimately going to be adopted.
Thank you. Along those lines, as I believe it was you, Mr. Schmidt, pointed out, some of this council is taking a pretty open view of what this could look like, and I wanted to share with you all a policy brief that was sent out that specifically mentions ADUs as a, an option for increasing housing stock and addressing the affordable housing crisis we have. I've, you have this, we'll provide it to Planning and CED, but it's a bigger issue than those details that we're debating in the, in the, the language. And while some of you might not change your minds on it, I didn't want to not provide this policy brief from George, the Mercatus Center at George Mason University, that talks about a lot of the things we've been debating, including some of the flexible zoning that was mentioned last week. So I just, I offer this to you as we continue through this process, take what you want from it or not. from it or not, but we just need to continue to give the right language to Mr. Silverman and Ms. Kostopoulos that you want to see taken back for final approval. Yes?
Do you think, I mean, because I think as we go through that, there's going to be a number of things where maybe we're split five, three, or six, two, or something like that. Would it be best for you guys if we kind of, like this relationship, family thing, just take kind of a vote on that, say, we recommend keep it, remove it, and then that gets direction, and then go to another topic?
Well, exactly, as Mr. Waldron mentioned. Mr. Waldron?
Walderman.
Mention. Yeah, make your motion. Let's get it done.
Okay. I make a motion that we remove the requirement of a family relationship. Second?
Motion by Alderman. Yeah, okay, did we get it? Motion is to remove the family requirement on the document. And that was seconded by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion had some already, but yes, sir.
That's then my number one issue that I'm vehemently opposed to. I'm not against the ADUs per se, but I think the familial relationship is important along with the property owner living on site. Without those two restrictions, I believe they become more rental housing throughout the community.
Okay, Ms. O'Brien?
I think this will turn Moline to an absentee landlord haven in the Quad Cities if we eliminate the family tie to this. I'm not for this in any case, but if you eliminate the family ties and just make it so anybody could rent out their garage to anybody that they want to, you're going to have a mess here.
Thank you. Mr. Macias and Mr. Went.
And it could also be the opposite. You could have people who don't, can't afford to, let's say, keep a relative at a retirement village for 20, 30 years. They could say, "I'll invest in my house and keep grandma or grandpa there, too."
Which they can do now.
Hang on, wait, one at a time, please.
But separate, not together in the same dorm.
Mr. Went.
I hear what you're saying, and I completely agree with you on the second half of what you're saying. In fact, I would like to see this ordinance to say that it has to be owner occupied, and to change it, you have to have a unanimous vote of the council to ever change it into the future. I'd be totally fine with that, because that has to be the cornerstone of this ordinance, is that the owner has to live there. Because then you don't have the owner, the absentee landlord thing where it's, both things are being rented. The person has to live there. Because the problem is, and I understand what you're saying, but to Alderman Macias, if I decide that I'm going to invest $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 to build this ADU for my mom so that she can live with us, and then unfortunately she passes away two years later, now I took out a loan for $50,000 to build this thing so mom could stay there, now she's passed away, the economic loss, do I have to tear it down? Do I have to just sit there and make it my art studio? I mean, it then becomes what could be affordable housing in our community, that somebody could move into it. Now, I'm there, so I have every incentive in the world to make sure that I've got a good tenant there, because I'm going to have to be with that person every single day. And so that is the cornerstone of it, and I understand your reservations, but as long as you keep that owner occupied has to stay there, I think that it alleviates a lot of your concern.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Again, we go with the hypotheticals. What you're talking about is a very hypothetical thing that could happen in the future. What I'm talking about is enforcement of this. Okay, you, the landlord, you have to live there. Well, how are we going to enforce that? You'd better hire more staff, because right now we've got staff that has to come out, and I've seen it in my ward where there's garbage laying on the street, because there's such fast turnover in some of these rental properties that, you know, they don't pay the rent for a couple of months, and the next thing you know, there's garbage out on the street in a fairly nice neighborhood that I think, you know, could be brought back to have decent housing. This is going to take things the other way, in my opinion. It's not going to help housing. It's going to drive down, I guess, the quality of our housing.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
I think when it comes to enforcement, we have to look at putting a big stick on the ordinance, because I agree 100% with the occupying either unit, I don't care which one, but you have to live at the property if you want to have the ADU, and pushing that through. But removing that family commitment allows for us to add affordable housing into our housing mix. I've lived in these types of units. My neighborhood here in Moline, while it doesn't have ADUs, obviously, a lot of the houses we have around are essentially ADUs on split lots from long ago before we had those sorts of rules. And I think that there is an opportunity to bring more of that affordable housing for people who are just starting out in their families, for people who are trying to come here and can't find places to live to make sure that we find them a good place to stay and to stay in Moline.
So I have a question for Mr. Silverman. Are there not other cities or other examples that you can provide for us that keep the owner occupied and give us the teeth on enforcement, so we're not inventing the wheel here?
Yes.
Thank you. I think that might have suggested the council that that's what, we need them to put that together rather than us.
Well, when you say affordable housing, that's hard to argue with. That sounds really good in a soundbite. It sounds great. But we want affordable housing that's actually livable in. And I've seen housing that people are living in with young families that aren't any places I would want my kids to sleep in, and it's something that code enforcement's going to have to keep up with. Like I said, you better get ready to hire more people to enforce code, because it's, once these absentee landlords, and they're going to be absentee landlords, you write anything in the ordinance you want to write in there, but you're going to have absentee landlords with us.
I would, your point, and I see your hand, but your point is well made. I think there's an element, Mr. Vitas, of coordinate and chief galt. There's an element of coordinating, any of those updates we need to come back to on the landlord or rental housing inspections and crime-free housing and all of those things that have been on hold. There's a timing here. If this does pass the council, right, we need to be ready for how we're going to enforce anything. And so I just bring it up that there's a, we need to align some kind of rollout of how this might be managed while, if it does pass the council. Mr. Went?
Yeah, and to your point, please, jump on the bad wagon and let's get the single-family rental registration up and running. I haven't gotten a chance to read through your responses, but multiple of my questions were like, why is this on hold? What's going on? Have we hired somebody? Because I agree with you. That's the, that is what I have been hearing for seven years since I've been on council is, we've got these single-family homes that are deteriorating because people are using them as cash cows, and we're not holding them accountable. That needs to happen 100%, these ADUs. And as we go through these motions, that's one of mine, is that it would be subject to the licensing, and that there would be a huge stick if they violate it, and that they would lose their ability to rent anything in the city if they did violate it. And so there's some ways to do this. City of Minneapolis did this very effectively, and it is something that we can implement here. We do have to hire staff to do it, but those landlords will then also have to pay for their registration of their properties. And I think that in many communities, it works wonderful. The problem is, we haven't done this in our community at all.
I think it was Macias and then Williams.
Yeah, and my point was just to these absent landlords, these companies that basically create a financial product out of these homes, they're the real problem, and they've been at it for many years here in our community. But that, I think it's a whole separate issue that we need to tackle separately, but this in a way also gives our people in our community a little bit more, well, they're investing in their homes. They're investing in their families and making sure they're not going to have somebody that's going to own their house or where they live right now. So it does somehow affect that as well, so.
Williams?
We've never dealt with the rental problem, and we've lost good people from Moline, because we've seen neighborhoods turn into rentals, and the transient nature of those people and the absentee landlords, and let them just run down neighborhoods. And a lot of times, you know, the people that rent, that hop from place to place, that can't get into public housing, bring trouble with them. So you have whole neighborhoods united against a crack house or these rental properties. They defeat it, just to see a year later, new renters come in, and it's the same old story. So they leave. They fight the good fight. I'm afraid that when we have definitions like the garage attached and garage conversion, it's great to have more housing stock for those people with acreage and they can, you know, build something really nice. We're going to see in the first ward a lot of $5,000 and $10,000 add-ons to garages, and you're going to have a lot of people living in there, and there's going to be no way to enforce it. We've put the cart before the horse with this. We should get our rental properties under control first with inspections, and then expand something like this. This will, if we just hire a few people to deal with our rental problems, this almost guarantees that they'll be overwhelmed and never be able to do anything. It's a real problem. We just kick the can down the road, and we should do something.
Thank you. All right, so the motion, oh, Mr. O'Brien?
I just wanted to make a statement. A lot of this, once this floor's box is open, a lot of it's out of the city's hands. When you have to deal with, like, removal of somebody from a property, or getting somebody to fix the property up, you have to go through the courts. And I don't know if anybody's dealt with the courts. They don't really move rapidly, as you know, you're an attorney. They don't move really super fast, and that's for a reason, to balance the scales of justice. But, you know, many times you're dealing with a long period of time where you'll have a problem home in the neighborhood, and you have just that, the neighbors just have to deal with it for months on end.
Okay. Before we get too far from the motion that's on the floor, because I don't want us to get confused as to where we're at, what is your comment, Mr. Went?
To, I just wanted, to that point, that's why you have to have rental licenses, because the city then can pull the license, and then if they don't have a license, then owner occupied can't be there. And you can much more quickly move through, because right now, we don't have any licenses, we are completely hamstrung. This would be something that would give actually the city some power.
So can you restate your motion before we call for a vote?
Okay, this is to remove the familial requirement for ADUs.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That was six to two. No, it was five to three. Can we just do a roll call so that our clerk can have it correct? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Aye.
By lies three nays?
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
I'd also like to make a motion, Your Honor, that if ADUs are used for any overnight Airbnb-type, I don't know, uses, that there is a very, very heavy penalty attributed to that.
Second?
Suggesting prohibition.
I mean, I think the enforcement mechanism is, or the prohibition is through heavy fines.
All right, well, there was a motion by Mr. Timian, second about Ms. Alderman Moyer. Discussion, Mr. Went?
I couldn't agree with you more, but I'm going to make a motion to amend that if anyone living in, I think the penalty portion needs to be a different and be more specific, but that anyone living in the ADU or the main house, the other property, that it's required that they have at least a six-month or longer lease.
All right, is there a second to that amendment to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alderman Moyer. So we're talking about heavy fines and any leases being six months or more. Were you ready to ask a question?
Yes. Well.
I just have a question to Alderman Went and to the attorney, just for purposes of clarification. You know, in the state of Illinois, in order for a rental lease to be valid, what is the timeframe? Because in some states, it's a year. I mean, it's not a valid lease unless it's entered into for a period of 12 full months. What is the law in Illinois?
Typically, if it's over 12 months, it has to be in writing.
Right.
You can have a valid one for a week if you want to. But for it to be, that's where I think where your confusion is, is that if it's anything over a year, it has to be in writing, and most states have that as a requirement. What I'm saying is to prevent months and those sorts of things, and to ensure that, and this gets into, and part of the reason why I did this was, because there was some language that said a contractual relationship with the owner. And what they were trying to say was, you know, that it's a housekeeper or a caregiver or something like that. And my question was, well, if you have a lease, you have a contractual agreement with someone. And so that's where I think if you're going to do this, we don't want short-term rental, whether it's month-to-month, day-to-day, week-to-week, that if you're putting someone in there, it's for a minimum of six months.
Thank you. Ms. Kostopoulos, did you want to weigh in as to leave a counter, your fault?
Well, I do have some concern about, say, family members who might be living there, and, you know, is it really reasonable to have a lease? Or the ability, as you know, probably better than I, Alderman, the ease in which leases can be broken.
But that's with.
So I do have concern about whether that will give the enforcement mechanism that you hope it will.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
So I actually think we need to do both things. I think I would vote against this amendment of only to preserve a prohibition against a day-to-day rental, but I also support a lease agreement. The way the motion was made, we were going to delete one and do the other, so I would...
But it would prevent, because day-to-day would never be.
Except my, I think we should specifically prohibit the day-to-day, as well as turning and having a lease requirement. And part of why I think I would like to specifically prohibit the other is because I shared the same concerns, that a, I was sitting here thinking, a six-month lease, but with no teeth in a breaking, or with a landlord who says, "Yes, I agree, you may break the lease." In addition, I think a family member having a six-month lease to a family, although you could have a six-month lease for a dollar to a family member, I think the only way to perhaps fix that is to restrict the number of leases a landlord may have in a year. So that a landlord can't break it on a monthly basis and turn it 12 leases that year and still be in compliance.
One second. Mr. Timian, then Mr. Waldron.
The state of places in Chicago that actually sublease from someone and then do nightly Airbnb, so like, there is a way around this. And so I would just suggest that the language has to be very specific for what we're talking about, limiting leases, because then the person leasing the apartment does have a year lease, but they're subletting it on a nightly basis, and so they could get around it that way. So I think if the intention is, we don't want everyone to open up an Airbnb in their house, on their property, then we need to have language that really kind of targets that kind of behavior.
So with that, I'll withdraw my amendment.
Okay, so that's, the six-month or longer is withdrawn. Mr. Waldron?
My point is still valid, I think. Listen to yourselves. Listen to yourselves talk about leases. Who is going to monitor it for one month, one week, six months, wherever? How are you going to enforce this? We are not enforcing housing stuff now. Do we need to? Yes. But even if we had a housing officer right now, he is going to be, or she is going to be so wrapped up in the property, they're going to start looking at leases now? We better get on four more Margaret's. I just don't see how you're going to do it.
Okay. So the motion right now is about having hefty fines in the language for any use of an ADU as a... use of an ADU as an Airbnb, correct? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, it's our same, five, three. Five ayes, three nays. Okay, anything further of direction? Yes, Mr. Went.
Uh, yeah, along these lines, then if the person isn't owner occupied, they lose their rental license on this property or any property within the city of Moline, and it's hefty a fine as Margaret can put together.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion.
What is a heftyous fine Margaret can put together?
I'm not sure, I'll be there.
You'll have to research that.
Firstborn?
Yeah, firstborn. I'm okay with this making.
Somebody's gonna have to make him pay the fine, too.
That's what you'll have to do.
We'd go to unisys.
Was there a question, Mr. Moyer, or comment?
No.
Okay, yes, Mr. Timian.
This does require, of course, that we enforce the rental licenses and we have that set up as well. So these are not gonna happen in a vacuum from each other. They all, everything needs to happen together in order for this to really work.
Any further discussion on losing a license, rental, any rental license and imposition of a heavy fine if the owner's not living on the premises?
So must be owner occupied.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes unanimously. Yes, Mr. Went.
I'd like to direct staff to come back and have the square footage more near the accessory dwelling, square footage in our, our ordinance. And they're...
I'll second.
All right, motion by Alderman Went, second by Alderman Timian. Mr. Went.
The, the reason, this, what was proposed to us is a, is a flat six hundred square feet, which may make sense on a eighth of an acre small lot in whatever neighborhood. But if you guess a place that has an acre, two acres, or something like that, that doesn't make a lot of sense. And so our, a few years ago, our accessory dwelling ordinance was tweaked, because it had some weird restrictions that if you had a ranch house, you could have more accessory dwellings, but if you had a two-story, you had less, even though you have maybe on two acres or four acres. So that the, that the square footage for the accessory more relate to the size of the lot, not just an arbitrary six hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Question.
Yes, Mr. Vitas.
You know, and again, Ryan, I'm gonna kind of go to you as well. I mean, typically in any residential zoned district, there is a maximum lot coverage allowance, which is going to then, if they built to the maximums, including their garages, they cannot build a she shed or a he shed or a man cave or a she cave. Nothing can be built beyond the maximum lot coverage. So those properties are out of play, except for the garage, except for the garage, or the basement, right? Because that's part of this discussion. But most homes have finished basins, some don't already. So I guess there is something that does regulate or control that aspect of the percentage.
Mr. Went.
And that's what I'd like to see, rather than this arbitrary six hundred.
We need to come back with an analysis, Ryan, and something that makes sense.
Just for a number of properties, six hundred is way smaller.
Because there's lots here, you got, some properties have four-acre lots, right? You could build tiny villages on them.
Well, you only get one?
Only one, but only one. Okay.
They would subdivide.
Any further discussion?
There's that option, too.
Ms. Kostopoulos.
I'm sorry, are we still on this motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, sorry, I'll wait.
Okay.
And what is that motion?
The motion, again, could you please restate it?
Uh, that we strike the arbitrary six hundred square feet limitation and come back with something that more mirrors the accessory dwelling unit or lot coverage that's already in our words.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, that's five, five ayes, three nays. Motion passes, Mr. Went.
Um, this is just a cleanup. In there, it talks about only conversions of garages, but some people might have a barn or a pool house or some other structure, just a large shed, that the limiting of just a garage being moved.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'm sorry, could you just state the motion a little easier?
Yeah, you moved that.
Yeah, that, that, that this could be a conversion of any accessory building on a property, not just a garage.
Seven.
Motion by Alderman Went, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Five ayes and three nays. Motion passes. Question, Ms. Kostopoulos.
Yes, my evil associate Chief Gold has pointed out to me that we do not issue rental or, or rental licenses. We have a registration. So is your motion, Alderman Went, to also include or by inference that we establish a license?
Mr. Went.
Yeah, I, I think that's in our goals and was to, to institute a license. So I guess I was thinking we would meet our goals and that would fall under this. So yes, that, that needs to get done.
So we're clear, yep, we're assuming it's gonna line up.
It will, it all needs to line up, because, again, I just, can I just say something?
Yeah.
Because I'm trying, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around all of this old conversation. I mean, it's really an old conversation that's coming to a head right now. You know, on the one hand, we're trying to protect neighborhoods and existing housing stock, so it does not become rundown due to single-family rentals, mostly, no matter what the neighborhood is across the city. On the other hand, we're trying to balance that, at the same time, looking for ways to provide for affordable housing throughout the community and not just in low to moderate income neighborhoods, but it would be spread out across the whole city, regardless of warrant. I mean, is that pretty much on track? And that, you know, the crime-free housing element, of course, is to deal with the issues that we're dealing with when we have somebody who runs a meth house and we have to, have to deal with that and we know how long that took to resolve. Um, and I don't know if we've lost any neighbors, but obviously you don't want that next door. So you've got that issue on the crime-free housing side, which we're struggling to implement and get compliance, you know? And the same thing with the registration. We're struggling with the registration element of this and how to do that. So we've been putting our heads together to try and come up with a constructive solution, you know, from a staffing standpoint even, you know? How many people do we really need? I know there's two authorized positions where we are, we are working with the building department, the police department, and HR to kind of massage those into something that's workable and doable and could lead to some enforcement that we're not achieving with some of those who are delinquent, delinquent within response or failing to respond in order to address council's direction.
All right, so I'm gonna make a suggestion that...
I understand this.
Yes, you understand it correctly.
Okay.
And, um, the process, as I am understanding it, is that this will go back to you guys, all these suggestions, you'll put something together, and then my suggestion is, before any of that comes back to council or to the plane commission, that legal and administration and his collaborative team have been able to get together on walking through what needs to be walked through at the same time, so that this, as you said, comes to a head together, rather than behind, et cetera.
We need a brainstorming session.
Yes. Mr. Went.
Yeah, changing to the licenses, I think, I encourage you to really try to do that as soon as possible, because it really gives you some teeth. And I referenced Minneapolis before, that, you know, you have some that are noncompliant and they've got some houses. Right now, the way that ours is set up is if you got a landlord that owns twenty houses in Moline and they've got five of them that are just real problem children, they still have fifteen that they can, they've got registered and not a problem at all. In, in a place like Minneapolis, if you wind up with whatever the nuisance laws, like you've got two properties that are licensed underneath you that are problems, you run the risk of losing all of your licenses.
Yeah.
And, and so that, if you want to clean up our community and stop some of these big groups that are basically utilizing the, the good bones of our buildings and just trying to suck out all the value as they can and then leave them behind, that's the way to do it.
Okay, Mr. Vitas and Mr. Brian.
Just a real brief comment, I think, looking, reflecting back, where I've run into this before, they did have a situation like that in Key West. I mean, it's an old community. I mean, as small as it is, it's compact, it's highly dense, it's an old community, and yet it's owned by people who are from away. They don't, I mean, they are absentee, you know? And it became a renter's paradise, the Airbnb nightmare, you know, the, you know, the drug house, there was all kinds of problems. They actually did a pretty, a pretty dramatic move down there and they put together transient vendor licenses. They limited those licenses and they charged a significant amount of money to have this license in order to rent that property out under the ordinance with restrictions in terms of your length of stay. So I think if that's where you're going, that's a great example that worked.
And so in the interest of time, I think we have given some significant, very clear instruction despite our disagreement in terms of majority versus minority on these ideas. Is there anything that must be moved now on this topic or can it be shared with legal as was previously asked in emails? Because I think we should get moving to chapter four, given that we have that and an executive session. Okay, I would suggest you continue the dialogue with our administrator and legal counsel.
I was just about to say.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I forgot to ask.
I think we're getting pretty far afield from the tiny house ordinance. We're talking about, you know, things that aren't gonna be tied, well, they will be, but they will be voted on separately. Because I'm not voting for this.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll close out that discussion and move to number eight point five, chapter four, alcoholic liquor, the Moline Code of Ordinances, housekeeping update. Ms. Kostopoulos.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've worked on chapter four updates cleanup for a number of months, as you know. We thought we'd come back with some of our updates, just to keep you apprised and, you know, refresh your memory and then look for direction on a few specific issues as we move forward in our continued updates. I would defer to our clerk, who has taken the lead on ensuring that these updates all coalesce into a revised ordinance.
I don't know what it says that I take the lead on the liquor chapter, but...
Congratulations.
So there are three things that we wanted to ask for some input this evening. The first one, I'd like you to look at section thirty-one oh four in chapter four, and that is the number of licenses. So the...
Pardon?
Yes.
I am not able to open it in grand case.
Same.
Same.
Go to the page and, and pull up the whole packet and then you get to scroll down.
I'm sorry. You mean go to the website page for?
Yeah, the...
Agenda packet.
Yeah, you go to, under city council, cow, council agendas.
I'm sorry, on what page? I've not done this.
The city webpage, go under agendas. Oh, just look up tonight's agenda.
Yeah.
The agenda packet, like, so you've got government?
Yep.
And then it says city council and underneath it's Alderman and cow and council agendas?
There.
Click on the cow and council agendas? And then click on the agenda packet, not just the agenda?
Whoa.
And it'll download all one hundred and thirty-three pages and then you gotta scroll through.
And while you all go to that, I included in that is our, one of our original memos, which laid out our recommendations, just as a point of reference since a number of months have passed.
Right, and so from that memo that led prior discussions, we took your direction and incorporated that in. One of the things that was recommended was to place caps on some of the license classifications. So that has been incorporated and we wanted to make sure that you're all in agreement on that. So that, again, is section thirty-one oh four, number of licenses. And on the next page, you'll see the table.
I know.
And so the recommendation was to lower the class B and BB combined to twenty. Currently, those tavern licenses, thirty are allowable. We still have an issue?
Can you just pull up the agenda packet on our...
Just hover over it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Click on council agendas. Yeah, don't, don't click on the memo, just pull it up. And then see, page sixty-eight. Then if you scroll down, just, don't click on any of the links, click on council. They'll lead you down the wrong direction. Thank you. Thank you. Real quick while we're doing that, how many tavern and class BB, are there outright?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
So currently, we have seventeen. It's been allowable for as long as I know, that there would be thirty. We could cap those at seventeen and then any additional ones, just like with the class C package sales, would come to council. The recommendation was to cap it at twenty. So we're going with that recommendation unless there's...
Objection.
Any objection at this point to capping at twenty? When we get over that number, then it would come to council.
So, yeah, we, we have some things where we cap it at the number we've got and then other things where we don't. I'm trying to understand what the philosophy is, because my concern with, if, if, if our idea is that we're good with having more, sometimes when people come in and they say, well, I'd like to do this, and they hear, oh, we're already at our limit, they're like, oh, well, then I'm gonna go to the community down the road to, because I don't want to go through all the hassle and I'm not sure if I'm gonna get it and, and that, that's my concern.
I understand that.
Ms. Kostopoulos, can you weigh in on the recommendation to go to twenty?
So we did choose twenty, is slightly above the current number of licenses issued, which has been somewhat stable. And we also anticipated that either in the ordinance or on the website or on the application, we would indicate that if the number, if we were at the cap of licenses, that the applicant could come to council for a granting of a, a new license.
Mr. Went.
What's the difference? Because I guess philosophically, why do we have a cap? Why don't we just have a process in which they have to come here? Because I think when they come in, they hear that they've hit a cap and so, well, it's gonna be tough to get, get in, one extra over the cap, they've set the cap for whatever reason, rather than if the, oh, I guess the process is I just go to council and move forward.
I think that's why we're seeing a little bit of a mix. So we could, like some municipalities and many municipalities, we could cap all of them, so everything has to... So everything has to come to council. But what we're feeling from the council is, like you said, we don't wanna cap everything, we don't wanna make it difficult. And so we're coming up with a number that you as a city council is comfortable with, maybe twenty, maybe you wanna leave it at thirty. But the number of bars, if we've been pretty consistently at seventeen, twenty makes sense. Restaurants, we don't usually restrict restaurants, nobody has a problem with more restaurants. Convenience stores, we knew there was a problem and we had convenience stores coming to us and asking, please cap this. And so that was capped at the current number. So when we see a problem, then a cap is needed? Margaret?
Right, so it's, uh, it's mostly about controlling where your businesses go, what, you know, what your, your, uh, business areas look like. You certainly probably don't want tavern, tavern, tavern. So it gives you that element of control and that, and that is achieved by the cap.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Went.
Do we have any concern, I mean, because, you know, we're allowing for three extra ones that we're gonna wind up in the same issue with one of these slot houses go, okay, well, now I'm a tavern and so I get one of those, uh, extra three of your, uh, licenses because it's just permitted and then come and catch me later because we still haven't figured that issue out yet.
That would be a good argument for capping it at the current number, if you wanna be able to control that conversion.
Yeah.
And of course they would have to meet the requirements of a tavern and their application.
Other comments?
We had a chili.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I, I guess if, if, if we're trying to cut it, to my mind, either we're, either we're leaving it open like we do with restaurants or we cap it at the number it is in review then. Leaving this sort of wiggle room seems like an odd decision and, um, I think given, given that transition, I think with, with taverns of just having that, I would rather there be a CS move to the number we have. I think that would be easier to maintain. But, but I, I, I also do echo what Alderman Went was talking about with it being that that mechanism is, is understood as the process is that you come to council to request a license. And it's not that we're capped capped, it's that we are, it's more the list of how many we have. I recognize the mechanism as a cap, but internally we don't, it's not such a cap, so much as if we're gonna come to council. Does it have to be?
Mr. Moira has his hand up.
Thank you, then why cap it at all? Why not just say that everything has to come to council? Because if, if you have seventeen as the cap and then it goes to sixteen, then you don't have the review with the next bar. So you just require everything, if that's what you want, just.
Mr. Went.
Yeah, i- is there a requirement by state law that we have to have a cap to make the process come to council? I mean, to, to your point, exactly. If one of them shuts down and somebody slides over and makes a quick application that we wouldn't have otherwise approved at council, but we've got one extra and they, they got it in before our next meeting or whatever, then wouldn't they just get it as long as they technically met the crock pot rule of a, or, yeah, I mean, you, you know, you hear what I'm saying.
I hear what you're saying.
You want, can't wanna answer that?
So it is generally within the authority of the liquor commissioner to issue, uh, licenses. Uh, the way that it is pretty uniformly regulated is by a cap. It is non discriminatory, um, it certainly recognizes that a license is a privilege, not a right. Um, I, I have concern about the process additionally of every license coming to council because it will be very administratively cumbersome.
I think it'll be every new license, not.
Well, new license. Well, that would be achieved if you just cap it at what it is now, which is why we're here for that direction.
Not if one closed down and another one applied.
Well, actually, the way that the ordinance reads for the class Cs is that it automatically drops the current number, once they surrender a license, it drops and that's the current number.
Oh, so they.
So, yeah, so to speak to what Alderman Moira is asking.
Okay.
Any new one would come to you.
But not for Bs.
Well, if we write it that way, we could.
You could, but it, it presumes that you are fairly happy with the number of licenses and the locations of the taverns that currently exist in your city.
Thank you, Mr. Walden.
I'll make a motion just to speed this up a little bit to keep the cap at seventeen.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman O'Brien, discussion.
I'd like to make an amendment to also, uh, change the requirement on the class B tavern where if a license is surrendered or ended in any way, that it automatically reduces the cap.
Second.
All right, it's an amendment that we're discussing, seconded by, um, Alderman Went. So basically what you're saying is you wanted to mirror what we decided to do with Cs.
With Cs, yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, on this amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? An amendment passes, we're back to the original motion to cap it at seventeen, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and just to be clear, that's voting on what direction we're giving to them?
Yes.
It's not the final vote. Okay. Uh, are we at our three, have we gone through all three bullet points?
No, we've just done the one. So the next one is section thirty-two oh eight, I'm sorry, I don't know the page number. And that has to do with license fees. So last time we reported that we didn't suggest any increase to license fees. All this is, is making an adjustment for some new revised classifications. So as you can see, in most cases, the application fee is three thousand dollars still, the annual fee is fourteen hundred. There are some options, um, that remain, the self-pour is still a four hundred dollar, the extended hours is still a thousand dollars annually, um, outdoor is still no charge. So we haven't changed any of that. For the new classifications, we talked last time about lumping clubs in with class B taverns since there was onsite consumption of alcohol liquor. But in looking at the fees, um, we realized that those were, um, less expensive fees because those are not-for-profit veteran organizations. So what we did instead was lump that into a classification, class D, where it's a club, fraternal or veteran, church or not-for-profit. And then those, um, have a lesser application fee and annual fee to accommodate their status.
All right, I'm seeing thumbs up, no comments? We understand what you're doing, thank you.
Are we good on that? Okay, and then the last one.
What is our next item?
Is just look, taking one more look at, uh, sales of single-serve alcohol liquors. Question came up last time that, um, what about when someone wants to go to the grocery store and buy a bottle of wine? So we're suggesting possibly just striking wine from that. So we still have the beer and malt, let's see how that's worded, the beer and malt liquor and then the spirits, um, but not wine, there would be no limit on wine.
Is this?
Mr. Timmy.
My understanding is that the, uh, volume of wine makes it excluded. Are we talking about mini bottles of wine? Because I think that the seven fifty, you know, whatever the, whatever a bottle of wine is, uh, is above the limit, uh, by itself unless it's under five dollars.
Right.
Actually, no, the volume, I think, allows it to, but regardless, okay.
So this would allow smaller bottles?
Small wines.
And less than five dollar sales for wine only? If you think that would be helpful for what the question was last time.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
No, it's, it's all or nothing and we're not making exceptions to let rich people's drinks out of this problem. If we're doing it to some people, we're doing it to everybody, that's my stance.
All right, Mr. Went.
I guess, I, I'd like to ask the chief, I mean, is, this was brought to us, it's, and from all indications were that this thing is working, the number of calls and, and everything has been reduced while other communities neighboring have stayed the same or, or, or whatever. Is or was wine one of the things or was it mainly alcohol and, and beer and malt? And, and if wine was one of them, then wine was one of them. I, I just, I think maybe actually getting to what we're actually trying to accomplish rather than.
Yeah, the, the problem that we addressed, uh, back in two thousand nineteen was not specifically wine, however, I'll just say though with a caveat, alcoholic beverages have changed a little bit. There has been expansion of single-serve wine that we didn't really have in the marketplace.
Cups.
Yeah, the cup, the single sealed cups.
Cup of, cup of, you know.
Really weren't super popular back then. The problem that we were, we were dealing with particularly downtown were the airline bottle liquors and single-serve beer cans.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you, any further, uh, information for staff? Mr. Went.
Yeah, based on that, I, I keep it the, the, the way it is. However, I still think we need to revisit, if, if this is just a downtown issue and, and this gets to, you know, overregulation just for overregulation sake, if we're not having these issues anywhere but downtown, why are we making this regulation citywide? It doesn't make a lot of sense.
Mr. Schmidt.
To my perspective, if it, we restrict it to downtown, then there, then, and there's a vagrancy problem, it will just move somewhere else. And if we then to, within our own community and if it is not needed to continue to combat the problem because the, the circumstantial changes that has, has gone and if, if we don't think it's necessary for law enforcement, I'm happy to take it out completely. But if we still think it's a necessary law enforcement tool, then I think we have to use it completely.
Mr. Timmy and then Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will mention, um, you know, previously we were told that neighboring communities ha- have a higher, uh, vagrancy problem than us, uh, and, and this was attributed to be the, the reason for that. Those same communities per the memo from Ansel Glink have the same ordinance. So this tells me that the single-serve restriction is not the cause of the, the differential between neighboring communities, uh, because if they have the same ordinance as us, then it's the same ordinance, but something else is contributing to that. Uh, I'm still a strong advocate for removing this restriction completely. I will not make a motion because I doubt I'll get a second, but I just wanna say that out loud.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
I- i- if in fact our neighboring do, my guess is they are not enforcing it, uh, like, like we are. I have been.
Well, let's.
Well.
Can we stick to our community first?
Make a brief comment?
Yes, please, Mr. Galt.
Just to clarify, there's just a little bit of confusion about the two comments. I think what Alderman Went was referencing was maybe some statistics that I had provided about Rock Island and East Moline particularly, they do not have the single-serve ordinances. I think what you were talking about was Ansel Glink talking about in the state, some other ordinances. And when, when I looked at the statistics in about twenty twenty-one, I think was my memo, I don't remember the date that I provided it, the question was, you know, did COVID have an impact on the statistics? And their, uh, alcohol and public citations were different, uh, were, were, had remained status quo in their proportionality and ours had dropped off. So I think we're talking about two different, uh, statistical references and then two different memos and two different ordinances, I just wanted to clarify.
Sure, but can you clarify this, which is what we were provided, that it shows the other municipalities and talks about what's prohibited? This, I, this is what you're referencing, Mr. Timmy?
Correct.
Okay.
And if, if this is incorrect, then.
Well, this was only in Rock Island, not East Moline.
So East Moline is above it, where Moline is shaded, East Moline is, they, uh, so above it.
Before we go too far away from again the crux of the question here, are, is the sense of this council to leave it as is, as for right now? I think that's what we need to decide and move on for now. Okay, thank you. We can always ask your questions related to details and enforcement, et cetera, of Chief Galt as you need to. So that concludes our chapter four discussion.
Yes, thank you.
I will call the regular council meeting to order, pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there an invocation, Mr. Went?
No, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Timmy.
Present.
Moira.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Walton.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of commending the whole council and executive session minutes of July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, resolutions. Council of sixteen, I'm sorry, Council of eleven thirty-three dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a memorandum of understanding between the city of Moline and county of Rock Island, setting forth the terms for submitting a joint application for funding and authorizing staff to do all things necessary to submit the subsequent grant application currently available through the U.S. Department of Justice, twenty twenty-two Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Council of eleven thirty-four dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing certain minutes and portions of minutes of executive sessions of the city council to be maintained as confidential until further reviewed by the city council and authorizing the remainder of said executive session minutes referenced herein to be made available for public inspection.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timmy and second by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Timmy.
Aye.
Moira.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Walton.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council of eleven thirty-five dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing a variance to chapter six, rights of way and public property uses, section eleven fourteen, location of facilities of the Moline Code of Ordinances waving, I'm sorry, retabled.
Yes, exactly.
I apologize, and that was all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, under miscellaneous business, um, just a note that, uh, did receive from the U.S. Conference of Mayors, um, our neighbors in the south, St. Louis, did undergo some significant flooding, apparently like, you know, hundred-year flooding levels. Um, we heard a lot maybe about Kentucky. And so if you know, um, organizations you're involved with that want to help, um, I do have a list of supplies that the mayor of St. Louis, um, shared to the whole organization. And I'm happy to share that with you afterwards. Lots going on in the city these days. I don't, I don't know if anyone was able to get to the, um, National Night Out ahead of this, but there's lots happening in the city, so I just encourage you to keep tabs on what's going on in your wards and, um, showing up. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I just wanted to thank Chief Galt on Sunday evening, it was his third anniversary of hire and he was still on vacation, but he came back and he addressed the Stevens Park neighborhood group, about thirty-five, forty people, and did an outstanding job. They just felt reassured that the city was doing everything they possibly could do, very pro, uh, all of the programs that Chief Galt shared with them, and it was an outstanding outreach, uh, for the, for everyone. And he just did a wonderful job and we wanna thank him again.
Mr. Macias?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Went.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I, I, I do have one thing, I, I handed out, um, a piece of paper that says wires and traffic lights. Last week we had, um, voted to direct staff to come back with some clear definitions on double poles, on, um, requirements of separation between lines and penalties for, uh, disruption of service when, when things are, are hung. I, I had a resident, um, and we sometimes get sign blindness or whatever, we see things every single day and you just stop noticing it. I drive down Nineteenth, take my kids to school all the time and when the, this resident "Do you realize how many times you've got wires hanging in front of, and in one case through a stoplight, um, uh, in in your city and, or in our city?" Uh, and he said, "But if you drive into Rock Island, you don't see that if you travel down Eighteenth all the way down. Most intersections don't have wires at all. If the ones that do, they're hung well above and aren't just raped in front of." And and I've driven other places down on, uh, Coal Town Road, Harvest Road, uh, you know, there's a number of places around where they're just right in front of, uh, and in some, some cases, you can't even see the arrow because there's there's, uh, wires there. So, uh, I'd like to, in addition to what we directed staff before, to add to it, um, how we can, uh, improve our ordinance to, uh, limit, um, uh, these hanging through and in front of our our traffic lights.
Okay.
So I'd like to make that motion that we direct staff to do that.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, second by Alderman Moyer. Discussion. Mr. Went.
Yeah, we had made these motion, and I guess just from Bob.
Yeah.
What do you think the timeline is for maybe getting back on on some of these things, the double poles, the the lines? Because obviously with what's going on, we probably need to have some of these things locked down sooner than later.
Yeah, I mean, this this is concerning when I, when I, when I look at the photo. Uh, obviously don't want any type of telecom lines, obviously there are telecom lines.
Well, i- i- and I'm sure, I'm sure most of these have been there for decades. I mean, so this is not a new problem. So I don't want anybody that we're picking on anyone.
No, no.
This is something that has been around for a while.
It's a cleanup issue. I mean, this is an inventory and a cleanup issue. We can't, you know, this may just be tip of the, the iceberg. It may be the only places where it's happening. I can't say, I don't think, uh, Mr. Doike can say, but I know that he and I have been communicating on the last meeting about hanging wires and who's responsible and how that process works. So, you know, you know, Mike, how much time do you think you would need? Because I know your plate's pretty full as well. Be liberal.
Uh, I would say definitely a few weeks. Some, some of the items are easier to determine and some of them would be very difficult to determine. Things like, um, separation between poles is something that really is is more of a design, uh, uh, function of the utility. So they, they determine the the poles that they put up, and there's a lot to this. There's the depth of the pole, the diameter of the pole, the type of the pole, how far they need to be spaced apart, the types of wires that are running, uh, across them. So, and and really, those are functions that that would be really difficult for us to try to get a handle on because those are really are functions of utilities. Uh, double poles, reasons why things might, those are also determined by them, but we might be able to look at those in in more detail. Um, and say, obviously, if 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 they're removed utilities from existing poles, uh, those would be something that we could also look at as well.
All right, so the main motion is, uh, is to
Just add this to us.
Add, add this to the list of requirements we want to see, uh, that are addressed, Your Honor. Mr. Moyer.
Utility company?
Uh, no, by us.
In our ordinance.
Yeah, thank you. I I've mentioned this before because we have the same sorts of problems up on Twenty-third Avenue and Thirty-sixth Street, and I've been told different reasons. They either, some of this is on the school property or some of it's utilities, and so I just want to support this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
So once again, what are we voting on here? We're voting to direct staff to have these removed?
No, include this in the reduce instructions.
In the, in the updates to chapter six, within our right of way, so that we have a, want a process so this doesn't happen in the future, and also hopefully that we then institute, uh, some ordinance changes that will, uh, require these to be cleaned up over some period of time. You know, much like we, we've had situations where, um, we voted on things where, you know, things are in violation now, but over the next eighteen months, they have to clean this up and and fix it. Or whatever that time period is that that staff feels is is appropriate, that that's what they would come back with is. Because I don't think that we're going to go in and tear these down tomorrow, but.
You're talking about a cleanup for safety's sake and
Right.
the cleanup of all of this aerial stuff. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. All right, Mr. Anything further on miscellaneous? Anything further in miscellaneous? Mr. Went. I mean, Mr. Timmy.
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right. Mr. Moyer.
Uh, yes, Your Honor, I just wanted to thank Chief Gault as well for dealing with a, for being so long-suffering on an issue that impacted a number of residents and, um, dealing with a lot of things that were way out of our control, and I just appreciate his work on that.
Mr. O'Brien.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Walden.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Vitas.
Just briefly, uh, we're twenty days out from the Moline one fifty celebration, so I hope everybody's going to be in town. Uh, I'm hearing that some people won't be here, and I'm sorry for you because it's going to be a really great event. Uh, I knew, it's fishing time, that's right, I'm sorry, Alderman Walden. We'll plan better next time. We go fish in the river.
It's take a hundred and fifty years to get to this.
All right.
So anyhow, I just want to let you know that things are moving along very nicely and, um, you know, looking forward to the celebration. I know the merchants downtown, we've had merchants meetings, they're excited about what's going on and the impact it's going to have on their businesses when you see, you know, eight, ten thousand people, you know, a day popping up down there for the different events. So anyhow, that's that's all for now.
All right. Uh, any other staff? All right, is there public comment? Yes, sir? Please tell us your name.
Jerry Miller, I live on Thirty-Fourth Avenue, Moline. And, excuse me, two things we we'd like to address. First is, we'd like to thank the city for finally completing the renovation of Thirty-Fourth Avenue. You can finally go from Moline to East Moline without worrying about your suspension failing or anything else or a street flooding. So all the staff has been excellent as far as communication, uh, along the entire route as far as happening. So I know you don't hear positive things very often, but this is a very positive thing that's happened to St. Moline. So the other thing I'd like to to address is we both ride our bicycles quite a bit in St. Moline, and there's very inconsistent signage for safely riding your bicycle in St. Moline. I don't know of any east-west avenue you can go that you can safely go and not worry about getting hit by a car or truck or wherever. North to south, the only one I really know, and it doesn't go all the way as far as signage, is Fifty-third Street. So we live in the middle of Thirty-Fourth Avenue. To get to Fifty-third, you go out there and risk your life on Thirty-Fourth Avenue. There's no signage there. There's nothing to protect you. So I have real concern that, I assume that the city has received money in the government transportation fund that was passed last year. I'd like to see this money, some of it spent, on making safer roads for bicyclists.
Thank you.
My wife, Phyllis. Yeah, hi, Phyllis here. Yeah, we, um, we talked with someone from the city about this because they said, apparently after they painted the share-the-road signs, that the mayor got in trouble and a lot of people were upset about this, it might have been the previous mayor, that people complained. And so they said, "They're never going to do that again," and we said, "What what about us cyclists that want to be safe out there?" So I guess maybe they could try again, you know, once those fade out, if they paint over them one more time and give it another chance, maybe the community will get more acceptable of people trying to save money by riding their bike and that kind of thing. It's worth, you know, worth a try, because we do, we love where they have the bike, actual bike lane, you feel real safe now. But it's those share-the-road ones that are a little bit iffy, so. And then the other thing we wanted to talk about was when you were talking about the hundred-fiftieth anniversary, this was something that I guess we just were so surprised about. We're, we're really involved in like music and things in the community, and when we saw just about a month ago or less that there was this big celebration, we're going, "Oh, what about us?" Because this is our baby, right, our Big River Brass Band. I had to borrow this sign because we have them all over town for our summer concerts, and I thought, "That would have been perfect for us to do a big fanfare and concert and so forth," and we didn't even know about it.
For about last four, excuse me. Yeah, go ahead. Last four years, we have gone out there and done Flag Day.
Right, that's just a small, right.
So we actually attended, uh,
Renew, the Renew Moline.
that they had one down at the, the old, I can't remember, Moline Valley.
Right.
That they said, "Oh, you need to get involved here,"
Right.
et cetera, and we heard absolutely nothing. I guess the communication is that the public schools quarterly, you get a newsletter from telling what's happening on, what's happening, what's happening in the future. We get something from the parts of recreation telling what activities are happening.
And we didn't even know about this. We didn't know about this until a month ago on social media, and we were like, "How did we not know?" And no one contacted us about about things like as big as this, because we would have loved to do this, but we set our schedule up back in April, it's a forty-piece band, so we can't say, "Hey, guys, in three weeks, we have a chance to do a concert," which is so unfortunate because we would have loved to. But for future, like when the bridge, when there's a new part of downtown Moline, right on the side of the river, by the bridge, we definitely want to be the the band that goes, "Okay, here's a big fanfare." Right, because we just, our whole idea is to support the communities, and we, we love doing this and providing music, and, and so we just want to make sure that everybody knows about us and so we don't miss out on something like that again, because it's a big deal, and we would love to have done it, but at this point, it's kind of too late, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're passing my card around there so y'all know about the brass band here, and Mike knows about it.
Yeah.
So anyway, but thank you so much. We, we love supporting the community and getting involved.
Thanks for speaking with us.
Thank you.
All right, um, executive session?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective negotiating matters, five ILCS, one twenty slash two C two.
Second.
All right, motion by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Timmy, and roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Timmy.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
All right, we're going into closed session. Thanks, everyone.